Call to order, the fourth regularly scheduled city council meeting. Madam President, call?
Council Wyden.
Present.
Present. Council Caneal.
Present.
Present. Council Kapano.
Present.
Present. Council Chakoudas.
Present.
Present. Council Kaluchi.
Present.
Present. Council Seh.
Present.
Present. Council Laupia.
Present.
Present. Council Lozey.
Present.
Present. Council Anet. Council Napsen. Council Trahan.
Present.
Present. Council Walsh.
Present.
Present. And present.
If we could all stand for a moment's silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could keep in our memories the passing of Maria Nikoulopoulos, mother of Tasso Nikoulopoulos, the owner of John's Roast Beef, who just passed last night, as well as the young person, Cheryl Kelly, who passed over the weekend.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing on a nation under the law, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes issued? A motion has been made to accept the minutes, and seconded. All those who favor say aye. And all of the ayes have. Madam Clerk, communications?
We have two communications. First one is, dear councils, I'm hereby appointing Mr. Richard Stavert to the Economic Development Industrial Corporation Board. Mr. Stavert's term is effective immediately and will expire on June 30, 2018. Sincerely, Judith Glaney of Kennedy May.
I'll make a motion on that.
A motion is made to accept and seconded. I believe Mr. Stavert is in the audience here today, if he'd like to come up and say a few words.
Thank you, everyone. So much great things going on in the city. Things are really starting to pop here. I'm really looking forward to getting involved with the Economic Development Industrial Corporation. I appreciate your confidence and the mayor's confidence, and can't wait to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Committee Men, Stavert, for continuing your service for the City of Lynn. What is the wish of the council, and the motion made from Council Trahan, and seconded by Council Seh? Roll call.
Council Wyden.
Yes.
Yes. Council Caneal.
Yes.
Yes. Council Kapano.
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes. Council Kaluchi.
Yes.
Yes. Council Seh.
Yes.
Yes. Council Laupia.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Anet. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. And yes.
Next communication.
Dear councils, I'm hereby appointing Ms. Judith Louie Callahan to the Lynn Municipal Finance Corporation to replace expired member Lisa Carbone. Ms. Louie Callahan's term is effective immediately and will expire on September 1, 2018.
Motion approved. What's the main and seconded to approve? If Ms. Judith Louie Callahan would like to come up, if she's here present today, if not, that's okay. Presence is not required. Motion made, seconded. Roll call and approval.
Council Wyden.
Yes.
Yes. Council Caneal.
Yes.
Yes. Council Kapano.
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes. Council Kaluchi.
Yes.
Yes. Council Seh.
Yes.
Yes. Council Laupia.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Anet. Council Napsen. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. And yes.
Now, we're going to do the induction of the 2016 Lynn Youth Council. We have some really talented young men and women here tonight with us, ready to start their service at the City of Lynn. We thank you very much for that. And what we're going to do is, we're going to announce you, if you'd like to come up here, one by one, and accept our council citations, as well as form a line. We'll take a picture, and then you will start your service. And we have with us today, Wanthana Sim Chenmani. She's not a student, although she is young enough to be a student, but she is the director of the Lynn Youth Councils. With that, I think we believe we're going to start with the inductions. And our first, first young woman is going to be a councilor-at-large, and she is a Ward Seven resident, and it's Caroline McDonald. Next is another councilor-at-large, who handles from Ward Five, Amelia Ferres. Another councilor-at-large, hailing from Ward Five, Taima Fawler. Another councilor-at-large, who's not even going to be here tonight, but it's Christopher Garcia, from Ward Six. From Ward Four, we have Jelena Chigong. From Ward Six, we have Ashley Robles. From Ward Four, Tiffany Albarenga. From Ward Two, Rifleen Altidor. From Ward Three, Newtubrent. From Ward Six, Michael Lamb. From Ward One, Lindsay Valeri. From Ward Seven, Christopher Mendez. From Ward Five, Kristen Santillian. From Ward Seven, Kyle McCarthy. And from Ward Five, Salina Chia.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take the time to congratulate our Lynn Youth Council members 2016. This is the first year we've had the youngest group of council members. Most of them are primarily in eighth grade, getting ready for high school, so we really applaud you all, and our present council-at-large members, for donating and donating their time to be a voice in the city for their youth. So, thank you, everyone.
At this point, Madam Clerk, if you could give the oath of office to all our new members...
Everybody, please raise their right hand and repeat after me. I state a name.
I, Mary Wheeler.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Lynn City Charter.
And the Lynn City Charter.
As a member of.
As a member of.
The Lynn Youth Council.
The Lynn Youth Council.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the responsibilities.
Discharge the responsibilities.
Of the office to the best of my ability.
Of the office to the best of my ability.
I'll have a brief recess, so folks can come up and take pictures if they'd like. You don't have to, you can come, actually, if you want to come into the council kind of dome here, you're more than welcome to come in and continue on with our agenda. Fortunately, it appears that our audio is not working for our folks at home, and the TV, or whatever, at least our mics around here. Madam Clerk, what is our next item of agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a joint meeting of the Committee on Public Safety and Public Health in the Lynn City Council, and update on the heroin issues in the City of Lynn by Chief Kevin Carpenter and Chief James McDonald, and Health Director Marian O'Connor. Project Co. Director Mark Knarre will conduct the Narcan training session.
Obviously, everyone in our community and folks in the media have been shedding light on the opioid epidemic, not only just here in the City of Lynn, but in our Commonwealth and in our nation. And we have heard from many of our councilors, who have had issues in their wards, and with neighbors and residents, about the issues around the opioid addiction. So, we thought, as a collective body, would be important, would be to educate some of our folks at home, folks in the audience, about what's going on in the city and in this country, and as well as a tutorial from Mark Knarre and Project Co. for the lifesaving training of the administration of Narcan. I would like to call up Police Chief Carpenter first, to give us a little bit of background of what's happening in law enforcement and in the city regarding this important issue. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, President Caneal. Before I give you the update that you've requested, I just would like to say to the council, congratulations, what you're doing tonight is a good thing. Narcan is a wonder drug, in my opinion. It saves lives. I'll be honest with you, several years ago, when it was first came out, there were people who would be trained how to use it on the street. I had reservations about it, and I thought it could enable, you know, drug users to use more heroin. And there is some argument to that, but I got to say, it's far away, like its lifesaving capabilities. I stand here before you, and some of my peers, including Mark Knarre, my colleagues in the fire department, and some of the other folks, who have seen it work in the field, and it literally brings people back from the dead. So, I congratulate you for being leaders of our city, and leading by example, by taking this training tonight. And I hope you never have to use it, because you don't want to see anybody in that condition. But if you have to, if you come across somebody in that condition, you'll know how to save a life, and it is a good feeling. So, having said that, I'd love to package, a package each of your positions there as far as the status of the heroin here in the City of Lynn, as the council president just mentioned, and I think everybody knows, at home and in the audience here, you know, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and much other countries have been on opioid epidemic for several years now. If you look at the single sheet, that's titled Terrible Overdoses Monthly Comparison, you'll see I history, I think many of you know, we've been tracking this for over 20 years, the overdoses, and in the last three years particularly, it's skyrocketed. If you just, for the sake of time here, if you just go down to the bottoms, the row that says total, these are total overdoses in the City of Lynn that we investigate. We do investigate every single one that we know about. And I'll put that in quotations, because if somebody overdoses and goes to the hospital, we don't know about it. If they're treated in the street, or 911 is called, EMS is called, we know about it, we track it, we try to follow it up, obviously, for a number of reasons. Number one, to help save a life. Number two, hopefully get that person to treatment or rehab, to get them back on the street now. And number three is to get the person who's sold on that heroin, so we get the heroin out the streets, so we don't have further victims. So, by the way, if you just quickly pay attention to the bottom, year 2012, these are the total overdoses in our city, again, that we knew of. We had a total of 118 overdoses, with 24 deaths. Over 2013, that number of total overdose jumped to 195, with again, 24 deaths. 2014, it skyrocketed. Total of 290 overdoses, with 46 dead. And last year, it skyrocketed again. 336 people overdosed in the City of Lynn. Now, the sheet in front of you says 38, but I just had a conversation with Marian O'Connor, and she confirmed we're now up to 40. I'll tell you right now, that 40 will increase over the next several months, it's based on toxicology reports we have to get by the medical examiner's office, once they give them, and they confirm there was opioids in the system, that number will go up. Despite all the good that's been being done in the City of Lynn and in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, this epidemic continues to thrive, and it's not good. Moving on quickly, the other packet I left you, this is, has the Lynn Police, can I add in on it? This is a summary of our investigations. People in the audience and people at home, there is no personal information on any of this, no names and date of birth, these are just anonymous people, but a quick summary of every overdose. And just, if you real, just quickly, just pay attention to the front page, the headings. As I just mentioned, 336 overdoses in Lynn last year. Narcan was used 217 times. Think about it from that. We had 40 dead. We'd have been 257 dead if we didn't have Narcan. I would bet, might not have been that total one, but it would have been damn close. That's scary. You might ask, who's using Narcan, excuse me, who's using heroin? I'll tell you right now, it's a police officer with 33 years of experience. It's all across the region. It's all across demographics. The most common person we see is a white male, probably in his mid-30s. All right? But, and I can't give you specifics of what I've seen as a police officer, but again, some of the folks in the background here with me, who have been in the business, will confirm this, but it's all walks of life. A lot of people think it's the hardcore street addicts that are down in the maga. Yeah, there's some of them there. There's also the three-piece suits, the soccer moms, you know, the business professional people. Just a quick anecdote for a second, as you know, we have a behavioral health unit within the Lynn Police Department that's funded by our state grant. And by the way, that grant expires June 30, so I am looking for money to keep them on board, so if you want to start a big sale, I would very much appreciate it, but your efforts. But, seriously though, I, you know, as a police officer, I look at crime, and it goes up and down, and then we look at the overdoses. And you would think, the more heroin on the street, the more people have to steal, or rob, or break into houses before their happens. That's not happening. Crime has been down, but as you see, the overdoses are to the roof. So, I had a meeting with the Behavioral Health Unit last winter on the Christmas holidays, and I asked that question, why? And one of the responses was from one of the, Tito Rodriguez was one of our civilian caseworkers, said, "Chief, we fall for every single overdose. We call them and make something up to get them into treatment and get them some help." He said, "I'm amazed now, when I call the people, get to check on them the day after the overdose, I get, and I can't speak to you right now, I'm at work." To me, that is very scary. There's people in our workplace who are using heroin. They could be managing your 401K, they could be managing your healthcare, they could be working in City Hall, they could be working in the police of our fire department, they could be working anywhere. But, and these are the folks that are, they could be driving us through buses, we don't know. One thing quickly, if you just go back to that packet, to the overdoses, and look to it's the second to last page, and I'm going to try and do my best to defend the good old City of Lynn, which I love, but it's not just Lynn people. As you know, some folks, and I'll say it from the podium here, some people say, "This is just a Lynn problem," or "It's a low problem," or "A Boston problem." I'm going to tell you right now, it is not. Look at the list of places and residents where people come and they're overdosed in our city. And you'll see, and I'm just picking a few, Brunswick, Maine, Cambridge, Dorchester, East Boston, Georgetown, Gloucester, Hampton Falls, New Hampshire, Hyannis, Maine, Malden, Methuen, Nashua, New Hampshire, Newburyport, Providence, Rhode Island, it goes on and on and on. So, those that say, "It's not my problem," this is everywhere in the Commonwealth, every walk of life, as I said. But going back to the point of what you're doing tonight, again, I congratulate you. Narcan does work, you know, I'm sure, and the training's not very difficult. I'm instructing myself, all our police officers were trained last year, I'm a little firefighter, we're all trained. And I know you're going to hear some statistics on how much we use it, how it works, but closing, I just want to say, congratulations. I think this is a wonderful thing you're doing. Again, I'm proud to stand here in front of you and watch you lead, and lead us by example, because this is a good thing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, for your service, and for your men as well, and women, thank you.
Thank you.
We could next have Chief Jim McDonald come to the mic. Chief, what are some of the things that you're seeing, you and women are seeing on the streets?
On a daily basis, we're seeing overdoses all over the city, not just in certain sections. They're in motor vehicles, they're at traffic lights, they're pulling up on the firehouse ramp for service, they're in men's rooms in fast food restaurants, they're in Walmart, they're in just about every place that is a public building, these people have access to. So, it's not in any given, in any one particular spot or demographic. Like, the police chief has already said, and I like following the police chief, because our information is redundant, it's everywhere. It's male, female, no racial lines, no particular spots in the city, it's all over the place. I have with me the captain, who's the director of the EMS unit. Joe handles all of our paramedics and our EMTs. He is in charge of the Narcan brand, along with the police. He compiles all the statistics for us, all the money we spent, all the time we've used the product, and when he comes up and gives you those statistics, they're pretty much mirror of the police, they're not exact, because, like Kevin pointed out, sometimes we don't see the same people he does. So, when he comes up, he'll be able to give you direct answers as to the amount of product we use, how we use it, the two types that we use, and the effect. And sometimes, they don't work. There are occasions where we'll go three or four treatments to one patient, and it's just over, the patient's dead. So, we have our successes that are probably outnumbering the failures, but the failures are tough. So, but he'll outline that for you, if you don't mind me breaking up.
Thank you, Chief. Yes. Josukas, if you could join us? We appreciate you giving your time tonight.
Oh, thank you. I'm not going to repeat what the police and fire chief said, but I was going to go with some stats for Lynn Fire. Thanks to the Lynn Police, included us in a grant, we always had the Narcan on our paramedic truck and all the ambulances in the city, including the London Ambulance and Lynn Fire's medic, one had Narcan. But since April of last year, we were included with the grant with the police department, and this is what the nasal Narcan looks like right here. Now, it's on every fire truck in the city, every engine, every ladder truck. So, last year, this is a pretty good number, I want to, not to reflect what the police chief said, but we saved 93% of the people we gave it to on the fire trucks last year, and that's a pretty good number. So, there's only 7% of the time that we gave it, there was not successful. That's to no fault of the men and women in the fire department, we just, by the time we get the phone call, the person was already, sad to say, passed away. But, so, it's a great miracle drug that's out there, and there's also a form out there, this is an auto-injector, it's much more expensive, this is about $20, this is a couple hundred dollars, but there's two ways to get it, we bought it through the grant, and we've used both out there very successfully. So, I just want to say that I think this program is great, hopefully expand it, and you guys all get trained, men and women are getting trained tonight, I think that's great. You know, the more lives we save, you know, I think it's a great thing. So, it's a great program, I hope it continues, and I hope we find an answer to this epidemic out there, so, thank you.
Thank you for your service. At this point, I believe we'd like to have our Health Director, Marian O'Connor, who's our eyes and ears on the ground, on behalf of the City of Lynn.
Good evening, and thank you for having me, and thank you for doing this tonight. I have to tell you, this is probably the most frustrating public health problem we're dealing with in the city. We lost over 40 lives last year. If we lost over 40 lives to the flu, the place would be going crazy. We've been working on this for years, and it's so frustrating to see the numbers continue to rise. Our best defense, and it's not the answer to the opioid epidemic, but it's our best defense to keep people alive, keep them alive long enough, so hopefully, they live long enough and are willing to make that change, is Narcan. Nobody's saying it's going to cure the epidemic, but it's our way, our best chance of keeping these people alive in order that we can do so. You're going to hear from Mary Wheeler tonight, who's going to show you how Narcan is used. Mary was just at our board of health meeting, and talked to us, and we heard the numbers from the police and the fire, and she works on the ground in the city, and she knows that those numbers are probably 50% short of what's really going on out there, of the folks who get the Narcan and never receive services from the hospital and 911. So, we're facing a battle here, and I appreciate what you're doing, and I hope you set a good example for all. And the more Narcan that we can get out there, the better. We want to get it in as many people's hands as possible, and we're going to tell you how to do that as well. We have Narcan now here in City Hall, the Republic Building, we have the auditorium, we have shows, so there is Narcan available, and there are employees who are trained within City Hall now as well. So, and we're working to get it in the school department, so that every school will have a Narcan kit as well. So, thank you again, and I'll wait to get to your training.
Thank you very much. If Mark Knarre from Project Co. can come up, I believe he will be our training instructor for the evening.
Good evening. I just want to say a couple of quick things. One is, I made this request in writing to President Caneal, listen, a month ago, to have us come, Mary and her staff come and provide a training, a brief training on the use of Narcan. And the response was overwhelmingly quick and to the point. Yes, come, it's important, and I think it really epitomizes what this city has done in terms of coming together to really combat this terrible, terrible opioid epidemic. And I've worked in the city, in the treatment sector at Project Co. for over 35 years, and I have never seen anything quite like this. There have been some good, the stigma of addiction, I think, is changing, as people understand that addiction is really, is a terrible and deadly brain disease, that victimizes not only the addicts, but their family and their friends and people around them. And I'd also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the efforts of the Lynn Police Department and the Lynn Fire Department. These are officers who literally have saved hundreds and hundreds of lives over the last few years using Narcan. This isn't why they signed up to be police or firemen, they signed up for public safety, and this is much of what they do now, and they do a wonderful job professionally, with compassion, and they really are a huge credit to the city. I might want to have a call to work with Kevin. Just quickly, in terms of, before I introduce Mary, in terms of health, treatment does work, it is available, it often takes time, relapse is part of treatment. We are here, we've been working in Lynn now for almost 50 years. The Health, the State Health Line, if you're looking for help, for treatment help, is If you have any questions, and sometimes the treatment system is very, very difficult to navigate and understand, I'm going to also leave you with my personal number, which is 781-581-9270. Call me, and I will help you. And that's really why we're all here. It really does work. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mary Wheeler and Denny Marston from Healthy Streets. Mary has worked on the streets of Lynn doing harm reduction, saving lives for the past 11 years. They are going to take the next 15 minutes and train each of you, and President Caneal, you may want to come down to the front here, so Mary can kind of look this way.
I was going to pretend I was the patient, but I won't.
No, that should be, no, no. So, without further ado, I'd like to have Mary come forward and do her training.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Can everybody hear me? Okay, all right. So, my name is Mary, and I work for Healthy Streets. Thank you so much for having us tonight. Really exciting, a little bit of element. And this is Denny Marsden, born and raised in Lyn, Mass., and now works for us as a health educator. He's come for our career for the last six years, getting back to the city. So, I'm going to talk to you about Narcan. Sometimes I say the laxum, Narcan and laxum on the same road. There's two words that change easily, and I'm going to try and make this as brief as possible. So, so Narcan, the medication itself, right? Like the chief said, it's a miracle drug. The way that it works, it's in our brain, it has opioid receptors. We do an opioid, goes to our brain, hits those receptors. We do too much, and it tells us to stop breathing. The second thing that stops is our brain function. Brain function starts slow, brain down active, then our heart, the laxum stops. Narcan gets given to the body, goes into the brain, kicks off the opioid off those receptors for 20 to 90 minutes and covers them on like a little hat. So the drug's still there, flowing around in the brain, it just can't work for 20 to 90 minutes, right? Which in turn brings somebody up out of their overdose is the hope. Downside of Narcan, it only works for opioids, right? So heroin, fentanyl, methadone, dopamine, ibuprofen, oxycodone, that whole class of painkillers. It does not work for things like benzodiazepines or alcohol or cocaine. But when in doubt, you can give Narcan, it's never going to hurt anybody, which is the upside of it. Any other council members ever seen an overdose?
Seen what?
Seen one.
Just the results?
Yeah. So, on average, we average out death in Massachusetts, we lose about four people a day to fail overdose. That's a lot of people. When we are in a situation with folks who are at high risk for overdose, because there are folks coming out of treatment, coming out of jail, using a loan, people with overdose before, more likely to overdose again, folks who are racing their drugs together, there's a lot of overdose risk factors for them. We come across somebody who's under the influence of drugs, they might look tired, they might look like they're actually sleeping. You might hear labor breathing, any of those kind of, they might be nodding out, right? Somebody had a nod and not an overdose, they can hear you. You can say to someone in a nod, "Here you alright?", and they'll respond to you. The problem comes when they're non-responsive, when they're pale, clammy, turning blue, their lips are blue, their face is turning blue. Maybe their eyes may be rolling back in their head. Sometimes they've seen overdose, or people are looking at you, starting to turn a little, they can't speak, they might have like breathing, huh! Or they might be burbling in the back of their throat. All of those are really serious warning signs that something is wrong. Our training, the first thing we do after the, "Here you alright?", the second thing is a sternal rub, right? I know we always go right for the Narcan. Narcan is actually the last thing we train people to do. There's a couple really important steps before administering the medication that are really important. Number one is sternal rub. We want to see if the person is completely out. We primarily train folks that are drug users. We are a deep page pilot site, so that is our focus. It's people who are using, they're usually the ones on the scene, as well as their families as well. So there takes the place of what some folks on the street might do that might not work. Ice, cold showers, things that will actually speed up the overdose. Giving them a drug, that's the opposite of a downer, giving someone a heart. All of these things, we don't want to induce when somebody is overdosing. The sternal rub brings me out, and I wake up. I'm not okay, I still need a 911 call. Once I've turned the floor, gone unresponsive, they all have to go to the hospital. If I don't respond to the sternal rub, you know that I am out. My next step is 911. Historically, we used to say on the phone, say not breathing, unresponsive, respiratory arrest. Now we're really trying to push people to say it's an opioid overdose. What happens is when your first responder team shows up, everybody on the scene is prepared. They don't have to run back to the car, they don't have to grab to the bag, right? And with somebody who's not breathing, they might be overdosing on an opioid, they might be overdosing on heroin. This is where we are, right? Then you want to get the mask on the way, right? At that point, if you're comfortable, assess the situation, and you're going to do rescue breathing for this person. Because that is the most important part of this intervention, is the rescue breathing. You want to lay the individual as flat as you can on their back. If you have a breathing mask, that's great. A lot of people don't walk around with them. Maybe people that do walk around with them sometimes fumble with them, or they're not used to using them. If you know you're not going to do rescue breathing for this person, please put them on their side in a recovery position, which I normally show people, but I'm not going to do that in the city hall. Basically on their side, right? In case I start to vomit, I take a seizure, I start vomiting in the mouth, any of those things happen, I'm not going to choke, and you still have access to my nose in order to give me the Narcan. If you are going to do the rescue breathing, worst case scenario, you can pull a person's shirt up over their face and breathe through their shirt. Breathing mask, again, is great. Sometimes people take their Narcan bag, you can open it, use it as a carrier. Not everybody's going to be thinking that clearly, so rescue breathing. Hand on the forehead, fingers over the chin, tilt the head back, we pinch their nose, we open their mouth if we can. Sometimes people, when they begin to overdose, their body ends up clenching up really bad. Their jaw clenches shut, their fist clenched tight. Never try to open someone's mouth, ever, right? Put them on their side and give them medication. But if we're all good, we're going to do the rescue breathing, and do that head tilt, pinch their nose, open their mouth. If you have a barrier, great. If not, you're going to put your mouth on theirs, go for it. Two small breaths. Make sure their chest is rising, not their belly. If their chest is not rising, put their head back, re-tilt, and start. If you see anything in their mouth and you're not a first responder, don't take for it. You want to put them on their side again. You don't want to make this problem worse. Everything is going okay for me, within reason. Two small breaths, and then hands off, I'm going to count to five. I'm going to do that three or four times. One breath, count to five. Breath of life, right? Then I'm going to grab my medication. Comes like this, or it comes like this, okay? Some people have access to the auto-injector, they are about $600, but they do talk to you.
This trailer contains no needle or drug. Check in check, please. Five.
Counts for you.
Three.
If you have this, that's great.
Injection complete.
I'm going to shoot it.
This trailer may be reused for training purposes. Replace your bed safety.
We're going to give you guys nasal Narcan kits that are a little different. You have to put them together. Comes like this, you open up the box of this little baggie, and you get three pieces, right? Looks like this. Take your plastic piece, yellow comes off, and yellow comes off, right? Two caps, pop right off. This is what makes it a nasal spray, right? Everything is threaded, twisted together. Put the atomizer on the end. Working with Lentercooke parents for about nine years now, teaching them how to do Narcan. The moms always told us, "Tell people to put it together like this", because when we try and save our kids, it's hard to get together because we're shaking. So if you have a kid and you keep it like this, it fits perfectly back inside of the box. I can tell you that it's hard to get on if you're nervous. Grab your dose, it's made of glass, right? Don't bite the cap off. You drop it, it might shatter. Slides in, twist in half, up the person's nostril, where it's very halfway on the side, half up the other. The dose is completely empty. We're going to start breathing again. One breath, count to five, one breath, count to five. We want to try and wait two or three minutes. If nothing is happening, we're going to administer the second dose that we have. At that point, the EMS shows up, or the police show up, whoever is first explains to them exactly what you did. I gave one dose, I gave two doses, this is what I think they're on, this is their medication, and any information you have, whatever, you can come in here. The person starts to wake up, telling them, "You overdosed, you overdosed", because they're not going to know what happened. So they're going to come out confused. They might be in opioid withdrawal, which is very painful. And they might be sweating, they might be sick, they might vomit, which is kind of bad for you, giving them space to know what happened. This is a temporary medication, 20 to 90 minutes. That person can go back to their overdose once it wears off. They really need medical attention. Your kit says expire September of 2017. The way the pilot program works is that we give it to you for free. If you use it, lose it, especially if you use it, we want to take a report back. Everybody that uses our kits, we get a report back from what happened, how much Narcan you used, did it work, did it not work? And then we write a little comment about the scenario. Down during our meeting, right? Anybody have any questions?
Um, please, Mark, um, how could you, oh, sorry. Hi, I just want to know, is there any particular reason why you have to wait till the person is completely out before you administer this? And also, if, um, and if you should administer before they're completely out, is really, I'm making slides for you.
I would be really surprised if you could get close to somebody that's not actually in an overdose to Narcan them. If they're conscious, probably not going to be able to give this, really only to help aid them into kickstart their breathing again. If you give it to somebody who's just under the influence, they go to withdrawal, it could actually increase their risk for another overdose.
So people at home can know, if they want to go through this training, where would they go to get the training?
So a couple places. There is a standing order for pharmacy access, so folks go to Walgreens or CVS, pharmacy, approach the counter at the pharmacy and ask for a Narcan rescue kit. They need an ID, so they need to be 18 plus. Your insurance gets ran, some people have a copay, some people has paid well completely. So that's one option. They can come to a pilot site, ours is in Lyn, we're on Hill Hill Street. Any of the other pilot sites around Massachusetts, they give the medication for free. Obviously, Lyn is your closest one, but if you look in the Bureau of Substance Abuse Services, they have a full list of Narcan pilot programs around the state of Massachusetts where you can access the medication for free.
Just to follow up on Councilor Walsh's question, are pharmacists trained to teach folks who come to the pharmacy? Someone just walk in and say, "Miss, can you show me as well?", especially in Lyn? And if there are any folks in Lyn that are providing pharmacy services that aren't trained to do that? We'd very much like to know that.
So all of the, so the medical director that provides us our standing order is also the medical director that provides the area pharmacies their standing order. So it's, if you run into that problem where you go to the pharmacy, you're kind of doing it controlled by the C, what's what, they don't know how to train you, and you don't know what you're talking about, it's really important that you contact us, and then we call the medical director. But Walgreens and CVS, all their pharmacists should be trained to obviously give the medication, and then train each person how to use it, the same way that we do. If they don't, then we need to know about that.
Just, just, the cost varies by copay or insurance, or if you didn't have insurance, what's the ballpark?
So it varies. The injectable, the intramuscular injection is cheaper. The intranasal, sometimes the one dose is $20, so the kit, we've heard the kits out of pocket can range $40 to $80 to $100.
And if there are family members out there, or neighbors, or friends, where do folks get support? Where can they call? Who can they talk to? Are there, you know, NA meetings, AA meetings, or, you know, property, family meetings as well? What are some of the resources in Lyn?
So Lyn, there's a lot of AA, a lot of NA meetings. There's Al-Anon meetings, which are for folks that were either raised by individuals that had a drug or alcohol problem. There's Alateen, which are teens who have loved ones that are using drugs and alcohol, primary parents. Learn to cope, the closest meeting is in Salem. It's a peer-around family group to get support if you have children or loved ones that are using drugs and alcohol. And they also have a free message board, so if you're not, or unable to go to a meeting, you can go online, have the free message board. You could always call us, come see us, we spend a lot of time on the phone with parents. There's a lot of service in Lyn, Suboxo Maintenance, Methadone Maintenance, outpatient treatment, some dual diagnosis programs, Bay Ridge Hospital. So there's a decent amount of resources in this city.
I was wondering if it was possible, through either yourselves or Mr. Knarre, if we could get a list, you know, brochure of suggested, suggested treatment facilities, possible steps to prevention, whatever's going on, and the phone numbers that were given up, you know, so the council could have, or they may distribute if that's something that could be done.
Like a local list?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, let me do that. Me? So that's not something we're in charge of. I think people want to be prepared under any circumstances. So that's the beauty of Narcan, is that you can't get high off it, there's no benefit to it. The only thing it's good for is to kickstart someone's breathing who's overdosing on an opioid. So if you weren't opioid dependent and they Narcan you right now, you'd just be really uncomfortable because they sprayed a bunch of stuff up your nose. Nothing would happen to you. Some people have the fear, like if they have Narcan here, is that going to give the kids in the school the okay to use drugs? But if the kids are going to use drugs, they're going to use drugs regardless of whether there's Narcan in the schools. I'm not sure, but I think if you want that, that would be a good youth council thing to discuss. So heroin is an opioid, it's okay. It's a lot of different words, you know? So in terms of looking for somebody who's overdosing on heroin or another opioid, and a different kind of overdose, you might want to look for things like pinpoint pupils, or their pupils get really, really tiny, their lips are turning blue, they're having a hard time breathing. When in doubt, you can try the sternal rub to wake somebody up and get on the phone to 911 if anybody is compromised like that and can't speak to you. But really, the blue lips, the not breathing, those are the things that we look for for an overdose.
Well, I can speak for our colleagues on how important this has been, and how enlightening it has been, how great this training has been, and I think hearing about it, and more people knowing how to administer Narcan, and some of the tips to look for is very important. We've talked about this as a council, but it would be so important also to just have all of our city employees going through a very similar training, because a lot of those folks are in around our community, in our neighborhoods, each and every day. And maybe the more folks that know about it, the more lives that can be saved as well. So if you wouldn't mind, would you set something up and have more of our public employees in the city trained as well? If that's something you'd be willing to do?
Yeah, I actually, I also, besides doing this, I work at Seven Deadly Studios as a tattoo artist. And my first week on the job there, we share a little bit about all the businesses there in the building on Monroe Street. And the first week on the job, we couldn't get the door open. And luckily, we had, in one of our businesses, there was a side door that was just blocked with a piece of wood. We were able to take the wood off of the door and open up the door, and there was a guy who was overdosing in the bathroom. And me and one of the other tattoo clients that were there at the time ended up stretching him out. Worked on, I had Narcan in my bag, we administered the Narcan, and were able to save his life. The Lyn Police Department came and took over from there. But it is, it doesn't matter where you are at any point in time, that was pointed out earlier. It's doesn't, it's not just a direct type of person, it can be anywhere, it can affect anyone. Doesn't pick and choose, it's everywhere.
Well, thank you for all you do, and we appreciate you coming down here today. The Council,
Thank you. I have a quick question on, to expand on the other lady there. Now, do we have the Narcan in the schools, do the nurses?
Marian?
Yeah, we're in the process of doing, as of the formality, that a policy has to be in place for the nurses to have in the schools. So not only the school nurses will have it, but they'll also be accessible. They have a defibrillator in the school. Same place we have the Narcan in City Hall, the Lyn Defibrillator. So the, every school that has a defibrillator will have a Narcan kit in there, and there'll be personnel trained from administration, teachers, and there'll be nurses, office plus. And that's our goal.
While we have you up there, Marian, I quickly browsed through the helpful information that Chief Carpenter provided. I don't think there are that many overdoses in our schools, fortunately, and I think...
No, this is not really, there haven't been overdoses in the school, and this is not... Yeah, this is not really, there haven't been overdoses in the school, this isn't for the schools, but schools are public buildings as well. So you have sporting events afterwards, you have teacher, you know, parents coming in, strange, so that's really, it's not...
And that's the point I want to make, I think we need, this education needs to go where it'll be used, and people that will ultimately come into contact with the users and overdoses. So I think it's a great program, and I want to thank you all for what you're doing and coming together like this. Thank you.
I left you all a little flowery piece of paper on your envelope, so we keep a prayer table at the drop-in center, and it's all obituaries of folks that we've lost to overdose. If you've lost somebody, you're welcome to fill out a little note to them, and you can drop it off at the drop-in center and mail it over, and we put it up on this huge prayer wall for folks that have passed away. So if you're interested, feel free, and we're all going to give kids... So the kits, we have enough for everybody, but we have to do an enrollment with you. It's anonymous, you do have to give your birthday, but, so I don't know if you wanted to do it, we can just do one by one, or wait till after, or it's up to you.
We can continue with the business, if you wouldn't mind, we could also sign ourselves up to obtain the Narcan, if that's okay with the council? No objection. Yeah, that would be, we could go on with our business as well, and actually, it'd be nice to take a quick break, because our young folks here, well, you have to go to school tomorrow. So, we'll take a quick, and Jeffrey does too, and we'll take a quick break, a five-minute break, and let you folks gather your things to be able to go head home, and we'll sign up for Narcan, and that's a five-minute break.